Good evening and welcome to the Town of Beekman Planning Board Meeting this Thursday, September 15th, 2022. If you will all notice the exits that are here and in the back through the hallway as well. Please, if you'll all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of our Country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And a moment of silence, please, for all of our first responders and service personnel. Thank you. On the agenda, you'll notice that the word adjourned was used next to the public hearings. They're not adjourned. These are continuations of public hearings that began in previous months. Regarding the minutes, the minutes are being prepared. There are videos available online if you have any questions from the last Planning Board meeting, and of course, this evening's will be transcribed as well. The first item under public hearing is the Trust for Public Land, Gray-Palo subdivision.
Good evening. Adam Dybert from Insight Engineering Surveying and Escape Architecture, PC, here representing the Trust for Public Land, the subdivision of Depot Hill, located along the north side of Gray-Palo Road on the eastern end of the town of Beekman. Again, for a brief summary for the board and for the public, this is a 137-acre parcel proposed to be subdivided into two lots. Proposed Lot One will be the smaller of the two. Proposed lots will be 12 acres and will remain with the current owner and under the same use. Proposed Lot Two will be the larger of the two lots and the subdivision will encompass the remaining 125 some odd acres, which will be acquired by the Trust for Public Land, the applicant, ultimately to be conveyed to the New York State DEC to be held as open space. Since I was last before you last month, I went before the Town of Pauling Planning Board. As you're aware, there's a small portion of the property, the subject property, that falls in the Town of Pauling. The Town of Pauling Planning Board has since issued, your board, a letter indicating that they have no opposition to the subdivision or to your board carrying out secret in the town's subdivision proceedings. With regard to comments from Dan's office, the far majority of them, I believe, are satisfied. I think we have a handful of outstanding comments, mostly clerical cleanup notes to be added to the plat. And we did request one additional waiver per Dan's latest memo, Section 130-20A6, requiring further detail, features on the site. Again, we think we've shown most, if not all, of the existing features on the site, and we're requesting a waiver because, again, this is a very large site. There are no, there are no proposed improvements as part of this subdivision, and we're just looking to not have to show any further detail than what's already shown on the plat. I will say, just a side note, that we opened a public hearing last month. I think there was one comment from the public. I did meet with a fairly large number of people out in the parking lot after the meeting was, the public hearing was adjourned. The response was, I would say overwhelmingly supportive of the project, that was happy to answer any questions, kind of like an impromptu informal public hearing out in the parking lot, and was great, happy to respond to questions, and I think it was generally very well received. With that, I would, if there were any questions from the board and public.
Dan, anything for you?
No, we're just going to back to the public at this point.
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion for that, or it's already open?
It's already open. It's okay. Can't cry over spilt water.
No, just can't.
Can I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So, just some rules of the road for public hearings. There's a sign-in sheet for you to write your name. When you approach the mic, which I'll lead you to approach the mic, say your name and your address, and then there's a three-minute time limit. It's so that everybody will have an opportunity to speak, and you'll notice that we will not be replying unless there's a significant question that we have to ask. And other than that, we'll be taking notes, and when the hearing is closed, we will be replying to questions amongst each other and discussing them. And it's solely for the purpose of everyone having an opportunity to speak. All right? So, is there anybody who would like to approach the mic in regards to the Trust for Public Land, Gray-Palo subdivision? Anybody in the public that would like to speak about this going once? No interest, and, oh?
I spoke last night.
Please, Mr. Crane. Yeah, yeah, if you'd like.
Not to take any time. Let me reiterate my strong support for this project. It will preserve the natural environment and nature and trees and the wildlife. It's a wonderful project. I strongly encourage you and congratulate the applicant on everything he's done, and I congratulate the chairman of the CAC for his early work in endorsing this project.
Special mention to Cliff Schmark. He really, he's put his heart and soul into this town, and this was a very important project for him.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Okay. I'll second it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay. Adam, thank you. Yeah, do you have any?
Yeah, procedurally, we can, it's an unlisted action. It's a subdivision. Really should be a type two, but there's no classification in the secret regs to support a type two, so it's an unlisted action. He's, they've provided a short EAF. We've reviewed it. There's no, there's no comments on it. The board is so inclined, we could do a negative declaration at tonight's meeting if you'd, if you'd like.
Can I have a motion for a negative declaration? So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
And if you want to authorize the town's professionals to prepare a resolution for next month's meeting, we can do that.
Please. Yes. That doesn't require a vote, right? No? Yes.
Thank you.
We'll need proposed deeds if we want to get ahead with the proposed deeds of the subdivision. You want to get ahead with the legals on the proposed deeds.
Yeah, I'll confer with the applicant about their timeline, you know, put it in the meantime. You know, the resolution, be prepared with, you know, any required conditions, you know, we're happy to move forward that way. But I'll confer with the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is SEMCO Development Group. This meeting, a public hearing originally took place in June, and then the representative of the applicant didn't show up in July, so we are now continuing this public hearing.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have something to say.
Yeah.
Michael, the last thing. We've known each other for quite a few years, and we've worked together for quite a few years.
We have.
We, as a board, have asked that the center line of the driveway on this project on Pleasant Bridge Road be identified, and that has not been done. That has not been done.
Okay. And that was, before the board, we flagged both sides of the driveway.
Okay.
I drove by, I drove by yesterday or the day before.
We flagged, I mean, showed, posted, it was marked out. We did that, went for it. Everybody didn't want to go out there and look at the trees and everything else, because that center line would break down all the dead trees in the back.
That was performed, that was performed the day after last night.
Excuse me?
Yeah, I'll, when, when the public hearing's open.
No, excuse me?
I'm out.
Oh, yeah, oh, all right. Would you like to join him by the podium so that you can get recorded? We prefer you, you go by the podium so you can get recorded. Yeah.
Just wanted to know, it was flagged out. It's not a question.
Okay, but I've been by there, and I have not noticed the flag.
You might have to get out and look at the flags. I mean, I'm not, I'm not being disrespectful in any way here, but that was three months ago.
And I'm not being disrespectful in saying, driving by the last three months, I have not noticed the flags. So maybe we, he said, no argument further, okay?
We'll take a look.
So, he said that maybe in the future, we have to set a standard and say that the flagging has to be of a certain height, and...
If we had something like that to go by, we would have done it. We comply all the time.
All right, so may I ask that hence, you remark where the flags are and you mark it with flagging of such a height that it is above...
We'll stake it 36.12.
So that...
Center line, 36.12.
Thank you.
And Mike, just a question. What happened last public hearing?
So, I know that the board adjourned a meeting, I think it was to the July meeting?
Right.
Right?
No, well, June, and then we had a meeting in July.
Right, so I did make a, a submittal, and the reason for that is because, because of the tree issue, we went ahead and engaged the surveyor to go out there and take the trees out that were not there, because based upon the discussion that night, obviously that was an issue. The following day, I went out with the applicant, and we actually went ahead and staked out, you know, the driveway, and we also walked the piece. And if you take a look at standing on Pleasant Ridge Road and looking at the property, it's pretty heavily vegetated in the front, but based upon the sun coming in, the area where the houses and the septic were proposed, that, those trees, a significant amount of those trees have already been removed.
Well, all right.
That was something else to me at the night of the meeting, but that was prior to this applicant owning the property.
I'm sorry. What I was referring to was that you weren't here at the public hearing.
Right.
And that was pretty awkward.
Right, so, so if I can, I can continue. So, we had to go ahead and get a hard line on which trees were out there and which were not. So, we had to get the surveyor to basically show what's actually out there. That took time. We didn't make the submittal. In retrospect, I should have at least submitted a letter indicating that we would like it for it to be adjourned, which I think ultimately happened, but my apologies, because, yeah, you know, I assume that based upon not submitting, that that would be the case anyway.
Well, it was on the agenda, and everybody showed up, and, including the board and the public, so, just a phone call, I think, would suffice.
Yeah, okay, my apologies. I have done that.
And, and I hate to even have to discuss this, but I just want to read for the public here. It's, it's bullet point number 20, and on your letter that was submitted to the, to me, and the board members, all right, I'll read it so that it can be recorded and so the public can hear it. It says, "At the April 2022 meeting, member Lopez requested that the house on Lot Two be shifted for environmental reasons." So, now, Mr. Lopez is a licensed landscape architect, for the record, all right? And then it goes on, "The response is the relocation," and this is, I assume you, Mr. Gillespie, "of House on Lot Number Two will increase disturbance grading and the potential removal of precious trees, contrary to board concerns." What did you mean by precious trees?
Well, I think the board that night had a real concern with regards to the many of the trees that were removed on the property. In fact, I think you mentioned too, that there was an extra particular type, there was a tree on the left-hand side that was important and should not be taken out. Actually, that was just off the property, I believe, based upon what was sold out there. So, yeah, was that a little over the top? Yes, probably, but we think that you provided a plan here that the board's concerned with this particular...
Okay. It comes across as sarcastic, is what comes across that. And, you know, what we're here to do is, you know, follow the law of our, of our town, protecting the view shed. There were a number of people here that were concerned about their view shed, and quite frankly, so are we. And to, you know, kind of rub salt in our wounds, so to speak, especially after the June meeting.
Yeah, I guess part of that too is once we had our site visit out there, I had sent an email, I think, directed to you and maybe a CC of the town engineer and so forth, indicating really what had happened and what we saw out there. In fact, there's a lot of trees that are not there anymore, so we needed to button that up, but I think, I believe, I offered to schedule a site visit, block it, which, you know, again, I never heard back from you, and maybe that would settle some of the concerns that you should have. That was, maybe that was part of it, but I think at this point, hopefully, we can relax.
All right. Okay, if you could describe to the public, all right, the nature of your, of your application then?
So, this is, yeah, this is the Boyd subdivision action was subject to a previous approval, and over time, the lots were consolidated. Since that time, the lots in foreclosure and repurchased and so forth, and the current applicant basically wishes to subdivide the property exactly as it was prior to the issue that we have now, is beyond, obviously, some modifications in personnel with the planning board. We also have a new set of regulations we have to go by. The underlying requirements in terms of the zoning itself are the same, but there are a plethora of other, really, I guess I would call them environmental-type regulations that we now have to adhere to regarding drainage, and then there's also issues related to visual impacts, things like that. We're on a road where there's a requirement to provide a 100-foot buffer for any disturbance occurs. So, as part of this, we actually went to the zoning board of appeals, and we obtained a variance effectively to allow the grading of the septic systems largely in that 100-foot buffer area. We went ahead to try and minimize that disturbance. We, there's also new regulations specific to health departments, so we tried to tighten those up in order to try and minimize that. The zoning board did not provide any specific requirement relative to plantings or things such as that, and it was not restricted to a particular distance from Pleasant Ridge Road, but we've done what we can to try and meet those requirements and maintain that buffer as best we can. I think if anyone had gone out to the site recently, you would see that there's a fairly significant buffer that sits in the front, but again, prior to owner applicant having the property tied up and so forth, there was a fair amount of tree removal that occurred at that time. So, we modified our plans to show the actual trees that are out there. We also do propose at the bottom of the septic areas between those areas and Pleasant Ridge Road, additional planting, revised position of streaming and so forth, but I think, relative to issue, that is, that is, that is it. We're all coming in off of a county road. We did have a letter of conceptual approval from them for an original subdivision. Things have changed, so we have gone ahead and resubmitted to them a request for additional conceptual level of approval. There's also a requirement to install two large 30-inch pipes across Pleasant Ridge Road, and with that, as a discharge point due to location of existing spring, we're also required to get at the time of DEC confirmation. So, probably, I want to say 15 years ago when the original subdivision came across. Now, it's happened, Pleasant Ridge Road has been repaved, and they replaced that pipe with an existing 30-inch pipe, which is shown on the front side. So, in addition to allowing for the access, we're also petitioning the county to allow that 30-inch pipe to remain, rather than ripping it out of the ground and providing two 30-inch pipes. Somebody up at that department made a determination that one is fine, rather than two. So, we are, we are currently, I was hoping to have something from them tonight, but we're just at the third date mark in terms of when they got it into them, so we don't have it at this time. But I think that's a fair summary of what the area stands and the issues.
All right. So, the, we need to, a motion to...
I'll make a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, same rules apply. Anybody from the public who would like to comment on the... Thank you. Mr. Crane, please.
I was one who came last time thinking that it was going to be presented, but it wasn't. It's a trip. The, I don't, as I understand it, somebody probably illegally, perhaps illegally, removed a whole lot of trees without permission. That's the impression I'm getting, and now the plan is to remove more trees, is the impression I'm getting. Are we going to strip everything around? Is it, I also have a question. Is it on a, is it on a steep slope? Is this part of a steep slope? It is? What the comprehensive, the plan says we should be protecting steep slopes, scenic views. This seems to contradict the comprehensive plan in many respects. Serious, myself have serious reservations about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crane. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to comment on the SEMCO development, proposed development?
I think I would just make a clarification. From my understanding, the original subdivision was approved in 2005, and so they had two building lots ready to, ready to go at some point. Likely, what they did was they cleared in preparation for that, and then for whatever reason, whether it was economic or whatever, as we went into '07 or whatever, you know, that, they stopped. So, I don't think the trees were cleared illegally, so I just want to make that point of clarification for you. And with regard to steep slopes, there are some on the site, and the, the planning board is charged with making sure that they have done the best that they can to avoid those steep slopes, and it's in our comment letter, and it's going to be part of a, of a board discussion as we move the process forward, so thank you for that.
So, I don't want to misquote you or put words in your mouth, but at some point, weren't we supposed to receive a table of some sort where trees that were going to be removed?
There is on Sheet 1.
Thank you. All right, I was looking for it.
These plans are big.
Yeah. This is Sheet 1.
Yeah, regarding the point two of the tree removal, I'm not sure what happened there. I don't, I don't have the history of it, so that's why I don't want to assume, but there is some pretty good growth in that area, so it happened quite a while, relatively recent.
Okay, so, yeah, go ahead, please.
So, does this, does this tree removal, was this modified to reflect that there are less trees being removed because you noticed?
Yes.
So, but the tree removal table that you did in the last submission had more, more tree removals in here, but they weren't there. You're saying that those, not all those trees were there to begin with?
Yeah.
You were going off an old survey?
Yeah, what happened was, we, we did the original Boyd subdivision, and at that time, I think there was a tree survey. So, we took that and then we used that for the purposes of, come to find out, obviously the disturbance, so we had to modify it to reflect what's actually out there.
All right, and it's, Dan, it's your contention that you don't believe that this is some recent activity that's been happened, that's happened during the current application process?
Yeah, I, I saw no indication of it. I've been at the site before, although I didn't go all the way up there. It's pretty thick from the road up, so I, I took a look from the road, but it, I could check the ortho photos and let you know.
Yeah.
You know, we could backdate some ortho photos and see, but I, I don't believe it was anything that was, you know, it wasn't done by the current owner, as far as I know.
Right.
You know, it, it falls in line with the, with the housing collapse in '07, '08, really. So, when you, when you look at the date of the filed map and everything, so it wouldn't surprise me that somebody went in there, started prepping the lots, and building lots weren't worth much all of a sudden.
Right.
So...
And that's when they decommissioned, they, they re-subdivided it to take it back to one lot?
Yeah, at some point, you know, the county has a rule where if you have lots created by subdivision, you can't consolidate them for a period of five years from the date of the filing of the filed map. So, clearly, it happened at some point in that 2010 or after, but somebody decided that they thought it would be better as one lot, and they reverted back to that. Maybe they didn't want to pay two tax bills on two vacant pieces of land, I don't know, but...
And then time goes by, and we get new regs, and our zoning gets updated and stuff?
Yeah, comprehensive plan was 2007, new zoning, I think, was 2010, 2008, 2009, 2010, they were preparing all that. So, yeah, they, they added scenic roads, scenic view sheds, they probably added information on wetlands, water resource permits, steep slopes.
So, just to, so just to clarify for the public's sake, we need to view this subdivision based on the current regs?
Right.
Right.
In spite of the fact that it once was subdivided, we're reviewing this based on the current regs?
Correct, and, and even storm waters changed significantly over that time as well, so that, that's why I've asked Mike to provide us with some calculations on the swales and the pipes and all that, so...
The, the stream, the, the stream, now, I think you told us last time, you thought it was a temporary stream, or it's not a perennial stream? Is it flowing now?
I don't believe so, but it doesn't show up any of the, of the map. I don't believe so, but it doesn't show up any of the, of the map anyways relative to not at D E C or even Army Corps. Sometimes if there's a small path, they'll flag that portion of it on the environmental mapper, but it doesn't show up.
Yeah, I think what's important to us is if it's flowing now, it's likely a perennial stream, especially in light of the...
Yeah, my understanding is a Class A stream from the D E C environmental resource mapper, the one on the opposite side of the road, yes.
It is a stream.
The one on the opposite side of the road?
The one that's on this land.
That's on the actual property itself? Oh, I'm sorry, no, no, that's...
That's not recorded in D E C as a stream?
There's, there's a...
And you're telling me it's not flowing right now?
No, it's strictly drainage.
It's a seasonal?
Not, it's not...
Only a drainage.
A drainage.
There's an N W I reference to a wetland there, so we've asked them to get a wetland scientist, they got to flag it, delineate it. It's, it looks like it's an outlet from that. Whether or not it's coming out of the side of the hill during rain, get some groundwater, it's popping out there.
Yeah.
Coming down, I don't know.
Right, right.
But it looks, if you look at the topo, it seems to be originating in that wetland area.
So my issue with, at the last meeting was being able to understand which trees were being removed. So I see what you've done since then is to provide a, a tree removal table, and you showed the existing trees on one side, and then on the other side, you're just showing, I'm guessing, the omitance of trees. But it's hard for me to tell, did you actually, and I'm looking at a really small map, so maybe I'm not seeing it right. But you didn't act, did you actually show the removal? Did you show X's on trees that are being removed?
I don't believe we showed X's. We just showed the ones that are being removed, not being there in the proposed development plan. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So the ones that are here are the ones that are going to remain?
On the, yeah, what you see on proposed is what's to remain.
Well, it's calling out for proposed evergreen plantings there. So on the, if you look at the Lot One septic system, on the bottom of it, I don't know if north is straight up on the plan. Yeah, so south of the septic system for Lot One, there's three tree symbols there.
Right.
There's a call out to one of them saying proposed evergreen plantings.
Right, so we have to sort of decide, decipher which is proposed and which is existing to remain, and sort of somehow figure out by omitance which ones were removed. I think, and I don't remember exactly what I said, but I thought I kind of asked, can you just show us exactly which trees you're removing so we could make our assessment? We have to sign off on environmental assessment, and we need to be clear about, you know, whether there's going to be an environmental impact. So that was one of my comments at, at the last meeting.
All right.
I think I made that comment. It was a couple of...
Yeah, I did take a look at the videotape. I don't remember that, the way it depicted, I mean, that sounds like, particularly depicted to make clarity, relative to which ones are being removed, that's what it sounds like, right?
Yeah, I just wanted you to put X's on the ones you were removing so I knew, like maybe a removals plan or something, you know?
So...
Is that showing just these three trees that are...
Yeah, see, that's confusing, because that's actually proposed.
So then, the trees on this point, remain?
My point is, it's hard for me to assess the level of impact, because I'm not knowing which trees, and I'm, I'm sort of left out of the decision of being able to say, well, maybe we could have saved that tree, because I, from looking at the plan, it doesn't look like it needed to be removed, but it's just omitted, so I can't see it. So I kind of have an issue with that. And I'm a little bit concerned about the stream quarter. Do we have, do you think that the realignment of that, you guys are calling it a swell, but would that be subject to the stream disturbance regs, you think, or...
Well, we, what we would have to do is have a wetland scientist flag the, the limits of the wetland. So if, if that's a wetland and a channel goes all the way down to the road, or if it's just a pocket up in the back, or if there's nothing, for all I know. But N W I just, it's an indicator that there's a potential presence of wetlands in that area. So the only way for us to know, and the only way for you to analyze it, is if it's field delineated and survey located, which, once you put that on the plan, then you see exactly what's happening. If, if there's any diversion that's, you know, within a federal wetland, it also would kick in a town wetland and water resource permit as well, if there's any disturbance to a, a wetland. So we need to know that to be able to understand all the permits that are required. It might require Army Corps, it might not.
All right. And so finally, according to your updated table, you're proposing to remove 22 oak trees, 54 maple trees, three hickories. And how many trees are you proposing to plant?
In the area of Lot Number One, we show three evergreens, and on the other one, we show four. That's bottom of the schedule between the area of the...
It's on this schedule. That's here. These four.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. I don't want to hog up all the comments here.
This is your fort, Eddie. You're not hogging.
Not hogging at all. I agree with you.
Absolutely. All right.
Hey, Rob? I'm looking at this proposed, the three evergreens, proposed being planted. I, I don't know whether it's Lot One or Two, but at the end of the septic system?
Uh huh, that's it. Lot One.
What effect are they going to have because they essentially are, I want to say, almost perpendicular to the roadway? What is the, what is the effect of the screening? Would it not be better to have the screening parallel with the road?
I mean, from a visual standpoint, yeah, you want to, if we're worried about scenic roads, like we're charged to be worried about it, you wouldn't want it up against the, yeah, you would want to provide a buffer along the road to try to mitigate the effect of the loss of the trees in front. If there are trees in front.
So the placement of the trees would want to be parallel to the road rather than perpendicular to the road as is indicated on this proposal?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, and I would think that on the second lot, because, what is that, a storm wall?
I think that's the relocated water course.
Okay. I wonder if the same would apply, you know, the same thought process would apply to those trees that are proposed on that lot?
I mean, it looks like he's putting trees in front of the house, so I think, no, but I would put more of them if I was going to mitigate the loss. It's not, and it's not just about the visual, you know, that's part of it, but also the environmental, to just have more, you know, there's been a loss of trees, so you want to mitigate the effect of the loss by adding back the trees so we can have more habitat restoration and less...
All right, so, so...
No, no, we'll go.
Fair. So the, your suggestion is that on both lots, that additional trees be planted other than the three that are proposed?
You know, I don't want to get too far into suggesting what to do. It's, it's not my money I'm playing, I'm playing with here. All I'm saying is, I can't, I'm at a point where I can't vote for a seeker that says there's not going to be an impact to, you know, trees, to water courses, to, you know, the scenic resources. You know, at this point, I don't see enough being, to mitigate that effect, and don't have enough information to, to even make that decision. But that's my personal opinion.
Well, I, I agree, because just to give you some numbers, we're looking at, removing 22 oak trees, 54 maple trees, and three hickory trees. And he's, he's, he's proposing seven replacement trees.
Evergreens.
Evergreens. So that's, that's my feeling.
Chair, I have a, I have a problem, and Rob knows more about this than I, but we're taking out these hardwoods and replacing them with evergreens.
Right.
I would like to see some of the hardwoods planted, to, to hopefully mitigate the loss.
Right.
That's a very stupid comment, because you want to have a diversity of trees.
Right.
Because if he were to, say, plant all white spruces, right now they're all getting diseased, you would lose every one of them.
Right.
But if you planted a variety of trees, you might lose some due to a disease, but the others will thrive, and you want to do a diversity of plantings to prevent...
That's what I'd like to see. I mean, eight evergreens does not equal, we have oak, we have maple, and we have hickory. They're all hardwood trees. They're very valuable trees in time. It would take time for them to grow, but in our lifetime, we'll see them. That's my feeling.
And the other point, to Rob's point, just to reiterate it, is we have no idea what's being removed from where and what's remaining. The backup area to the septic, is that being clear cut, Mike?
The expansion area?
Yeah.
I presume, that presumption that that may happen at some day. So yes, I show the trees at the bottom of the expansion area.
Right.
So, and I presume on this case that those trees will be removed at some point. That's not to say that initially, the system could just prime our system as well, and that, yeah, they're going to be removed, but the expansion area would remain.
Right. Just, just so you know, I, I clearly remember Rob asking for the location of the trees that were going to be remaining, and the ones that were going to be removed. And that was back in June, so I don't want there to be any misunderstanding that, you know, we're, we're delaying this in any way.
Yeah, having X's, you know, on plan with kind of maybe the, the house and the separate lights, you know, in the background, I think it would probably help you see what's, what's kind of happening and what trees are coming out there and stuff like that.
Right.
That's kind of a graphic, graphic thing that I'm looking at.
Right, okay.
Just, just quick to a regarding, I know in terms of the trees parallel to the road and so forth, I know that the grading on the lot for Lot Number One comes right up to the property on this stolen wall there. So there's a reason why they've run straight across because of how the property on the stolen wall. So in order to put trees beyond that, would be in the county roadway.
Can't you put it into the slope? You can plant trees on steep slopes. In fact, it's good to plant trees on steep slopes.
Well, they'd be into the side of the septic areas, which is playground material and typically to help the partner, doesn't like trees within 10 feet of the septic area, loops and get some of the pipes and such as that.
So if there are any setback, any other setback limitations that we need to consider in that decision, you should show that on the drawing? If there's a setback from the septic that, and you're, you're absolutely right, there is, you should probably show that so that would help us in deciding, you know, where the trees can go and where they can't go.
You get a retaining wall there too, so...
What's that?
There's a retaining wall on that one also.
Yeah, that's how close it is.
Yeah.
Are there trees being removed in that area in the vicinity of the retaining wall?
Basically, if you took this over, like...
Yeah, yeah, so there's all those trees right up against the wall that are going to go.
That needs to be made clear.
If I look at the two, yeah. So isn't that going to disturb the wall when you remove the trees?
Well, we're right up against the wall. We want to maintain the stolen wall.
Yeah, definitely try to maintain that wall.
Mike, you know what, what could help is if you, if you put the trees to remain on a layer that's going to be a tree to remain, then you can viewport freeze it, and you can show that way which ones you're expecting that you can hopefully save. And then that also shows how you're supplementing the ones that are to remain with the new ones. And then they can have a nice idea of how that...
I want to see which trees are being removed, yeah, yeah, yeah. Even if it means having another plan that's a tree removal.
And you could still have the removals with an X, but it's also a helpful visual when you put it on to the ones that are to remain, if you continue to show them.
Yeah, yeah.
You, you don't have to keep the ones necessarily that are to be removed on that one plan, because then you've got too many lines.
Yeah, as long as you have the other plan that's showing, that's, yeah, I...
And then that way you can understand how you want to supplement landscaping for them.
Yeah.
It'd make it a lot easier for you to, to maybe offer suggestions at that point.
Yeah.
The, 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 the,
That's what we look for when we're assessing the slopes. What type of retaining wall would you propose?
Well, it would have to be a retaining wall, that we didn't have to excavate the back, make it work. So, whether it was just a, you know, board wall, something along those lines, grabby, grabby type of thing, that's the idea.
I mean, that's definitely the things we look at when we're assessing the steep slopes, when you go through that checklist and the ordinance of, you know, have you taken steps to avoid from disturbing the slopes? And so, yeah, if you're suggesting doing a wall, that would limit, then you would be limiting the disturbance, so, yeah, that's a good idea, I think, to try to limit the disturbance of the steep slopes. That way, you know, because once you disturb it, then there's going to be erosion issues, and the less you disturb, the better, I think.
Right.
So, I think that's a good idea, yeah.
Yeah, it might be helpful to also get first floor elevations on here. I see the garage floor elevations, but if we get first floor elevations on there as well, get a better feel for how the lots need to be graded.
Yeah, I can certainly put some on here, just to show how things work.
Yeah.
Obviously, while part of it...
Yeah. Right. You can't tell who the toilet is based on these, they're kind of going by us, the grades.
Dan, we're okay with the driveway split?
So, we did have a fire advisory board meeting this morning, and I would say that the fire advisory board was happier with the layout, with the T that's kind of extended out. There's still a little concern with the grades at that portion, but I'm not sure what we can and can't do about that, you know, and that also goes back to my comment about the DPW, whether or not they're going to let you come off positive grade from their road as well for drainage issues. So, it's important to kind of get that nailed down with DPW, so that we can know that this is a realistic profile here, and then figure out what the grades can and can't be in that area there. The fire advisory board talked about maybe turning the inside of those curves just a little bit more, just to kind of give it a little more width. But if the slopes can't be much better than that, I'm not sure that that's going to be completely helpful. So, it's a work in progress, I think. I think we need, they'll continue to talk about it at their meetings until, you know, as long as it's a planning board item, it'll continue to come up, but...
Right. It's more, it's more disturbance, you know, so trying to find a balance.
Yeah. Yeah, might end up being more retaining walls, just because of that, who knows, you know, so...
I don't have any more comments.
One thing I had also mentioned in the letter was the shared driveway. Right now, their proposal is the first person who builds the driveway. So, it's one of those situations where it's over the property line, there'll be an easement in place, there's going to have to be a drive, shared driveway maintenance easement agreement. I think the limits of that easement actually have to be better based on the grading, but, you know, but the board should probably render an opinion on whether or not this should be done, the common portion should be done by the developer sooner than the sale of the lots, or before it's filed, or if they're okay with that proposal, so...
Yeah, we have proposed that the first one in does the job, which means that, I think it's the intent of the owner to build both, it's not like sell one lot, gel one, gel, the intent is to build both, so, you know, I think we provide some notation on here indicating that, saying, you know, whoever gets the first building permit is responsible for the whole deal, because you can't really do it in another way, you can't do half of it and half. So, if there's some formal legality way to make that work, that's fine, be on a note on the map, but that's what we offer.
But it's deeper than that, isn't it?
I'm sorry?
The reference of the maintenance of the, of the shared driveway?
They're going to have to have a legal document.
In the future.
They're going to have to have a legal document that, you know, discusses whose maintenance responsibilities, who's paying for what, how they're going to do it, that they have the rights to pass through and to their properties, that they don't, they can't put in obstruction and block it, you know, things like that.
Do we have, because we've been through this in the past, do we have a general standard for shared driveways?
In terms of easement language, the legal portion, or...
The legal, the legal portion and to cover both parties in relation to...
That you...
Anything connected with the driveways.
So, it should be noted on the map, of course, the subdivision map, and...
But do we have, but because we've had a few bad situations before where we've dealt with shared driveways. And actually, we're facing it also on the subdivision off of Baker.
Cottage?
Yeah, cottage. I mean, we're going to be in the same situation, so do we have a set of guidelines for this type of a situation? Or is every situation treated differently?
Well, the builder is going to be subject to drawings, so right off the...
I'm not concerned about, I'm not...
You're not concerned about the construction of it?
No, I'm not talking about the construction, I'm talking about the driveway maintenance, et cetera, and egress and ingress.
Yeah, so before this gets approved, they have to have ironed out the easement, they have to prepare, have to prepare an easement. In the easement, it will describe all the responsibilities for maintenance and operation.
Okay, so my question is, is does, I understand that.
Okay.
I'm trying to think a little further down the road. We've been, we've been through this in the past. Do we have some sort of a standard or a set of guidelines for these type of situations? If we don't, we should.
But what would the guideline, what are you proposing the guideline would be? Give me one guideline that you're talking about.
Just the maintenance of the road? The maintenance of the driveway?
Yeah, that's in the easement. Oh, so the main, the actual performance of, yeah, what the maintenance standard is?
Or who would be, in effect, who...
I've seen easements...
Rob, who would be responsible?
All right, I live on a shared drive, we have an easement.
Who would be responsible for the, for the maintenance of the driveway? Who's responsible for the snow removal?
That's what the, that's what the easement and maintenance agreement would secure.
I understand.
So, that's...
So, my que, but my question is, is do we have a standard form? Or is everyone treated differently, created differently?
Our code requires that an easement be filed for a shared driveway. Now, the lawyers work out every word that's in the easement and maintenance agreement.
But you're not, okay.
It's just a way to...
I'm going...
We're correcting the issues of the past by incorporating easements and maintenance agreements.
I own lot one, and you own lot two.
Yep.
Who's going to be responsible?
It says it in the easement and maintenance agreement.
It'll say it like this.
It's probably pretty standard.
Forget it. I understand that it's going to be in it, okay? I guess my question is, is generally, lots of times on this legal stuff, there is a standard form, item number one, item number two, item number three, et cetera. Do we have a item criteria that is followed?
Yeah, well, we, section 155-56 of the code, okay, is standards for shared driveway.
I hope I'm not making an issue, big issue out of something that...
I think, you know, Pete, I think the problems that you're talking about that we've had in the past are for those shared driveways that didn't have an easement. And then we had to now work after the fact, retroactively, to talk, to get these owners to agree on a plan. Anybody buying these two lots are coming into it knowing their responsibilities and obligations.
Okay.
And it's in the deed. Their deed will say that...
No, no, I'll buy, I'll buy what you say, but we're going to be, we're going to be facing this same thing again on the cottage lane. Who, what's the name of the...
You're talking about Valley? Valley View?
Oh, Valley View.
You're talking about Valley View? The private road?
Yeah.
The Casey's.
Thank you.
Yes.
The Casey subdivision.
Yeah, that's a case of an existing private road.
Right.
So, did, that, the process that we're suggesting and what the code is talking about with the easement and maintenance agreement is in place to avoid that issue.
That's a family situation.
That's, that's why we're not going to have that problem, because we're telling them now, you have to formalize an arrangement.
Right, right.
And so, yeah, now, I live on a, on a road, and I do all the maintenance, and the other lots don't do nothing. So, yeah, sometimes it doesn't work, but it's not because it's not in the easement. And I could go to a lawyer and get my sister to chip in a little, but I'm happy to help. I'm happy to move.
All right, thank you. Mike, how much time do you think it would take to get the wetlands delineated and surveyed, and to continue discussions with DPW and DEC? If, you know, the DEC kind of comes out of the picture if DPW says the 30-inch pipe that's there is sufficient, so...
I go like that.
Yeah.
So, I'm hoping, hoping you're back from county, give it next week. So, I should have that. I mean, I can get the consultant out there, delineate it pretty quick, becomes an issue of getting it surveyed. I know what has been done already, and adjourn this to...
Yeah.
Do you have something on the wetland yet?
What we have done is we have detailed the location of the Army Corps wetland that's taken off of the parcel access, and detailed its locations, so...
So, in the subdivision ordinance, which is not the only, this is the subdivision ordinance, this is standards for roads and streams. We compel the developers to this standard.
I have an obligation to report to the board environmental, since you run a few of these projects here.
There is.
And I have nothing to work with on the wetland at this point, just the word wetland, not the map. I gotta see where the weather is, I gotta see where the buffer is, but I can make a decision. Um, yeah, we actually showed on this plan and the tires and the, and the rock, where it's taken.
It's going to be like shared use driveway.
This, this information is also...
Is this referenced chapters? No, because none of these chapters are in here. This is chapter...
So, it's October 31st is the deadline. So, that's like a month and a half period to tighten some of that up, because without knowing all the permits and everything, it's not fair to the public either at that point. So, we just got to, we'll be able to outline everything by then, hopefully, and be able to move the process forward. So, the, if you're inclined to adjourn the meeting, it would be to adjourn it to November 17th for a continued public hearing on that date.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing to November, did you say?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Seventeenth, 2022.
I'll second it.
All right. Pete?
All in favor? I'm sorry.
Should I shoot him with a rubber band?
Yeah.
Hey, Pete?
Want to join us?
Hey, Pete?
Peter?
So, we have a motion to adjourn the meeting till November 17th, 2022.
Will you go home?
No. Nope.
All right, I'll second the motion, or I, whatever.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so, under discussions, Volta Charging. To the end.
It's good.
Thank you, Admiral. Ale Fauzner from Cuddy and Vader appearing on behalf of Volta Charging in connection with their sign application for two electric vehicle charging stations at the Stop and Shop located at 1328 Deep Men Road. Tonight, I'm accompanied by Gabby DeSilva from Volta, as well as Peter Salpaccas from the Pino More. Peter's going to take you through the recent landscape additions added to our vice plans and submitted to your board upon your request at the last meeting.
And if I could just update some of the board members that weren't here, all right, about what happened at the last meeting. So, the, Pete was here, so he's aware, but we had requested in previous meetings that because this falls under a sign where the advertisements fund the charging station for the individuals who are using it, and it went to the zoning board of appeals, and they approved the area variance, and...
Is that correct? Area variance is what they approved.
And then, we had wanted it to conform to our code, which was for it to look country and wood and in keeping with the architecture of our town, and a comprehensive plan. Since then, they, well, they had agreed, and they had had a product, but that product had been pulled, and now they have cement panels that are on the, on the bottom of the, of the charge station itself. I'm not sure of the finish, but this, this picture does do a better, gives you a better idea of what it, what it would look like. And then, the idea was to use the plantings to mitigate the impact of the lack of material that used to exist. Sorry, all right? I just wanted to...
I'd love to clarify in regards to the wood base product.
Thank you, please.
We would be able to provide that for you guys.
Be able to do what?
Uh, the wood base, I believe is the question.
So, I wasted all of that air.
I didn't want to cut you off.
No, please, it happens all the time.
Yes, we could accommodate that wood base product for you guys.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Scratch everything, Pete. Delete that. So, are there samples, or what is it going to look like? You can describe it, or is it in this documentation?
So, we have not provided documentation of the wooden sample, but it has a very nice rusted glare to it, and it's just a wooden base that would be around the base of the charging station. If you give us a moment, I'm sure we could pull up information of it, if you'd like to make it pass that around.
Okay.
Great.
The state of the base is very similar to kind of a wood grain safety, you can see on this place, it's a little lighter, and it's just like a wood grain.
I'm just going to go around and show it to you all, you'll work it out.
Sure, please.
Do you, what, what is, what does that stand for, is that the name?
This is Volta.
Okay, okay.
Hey, buddy.
Yeah.
Very nice. So, what type of wood is it? Is it a resin?
Gabby, what type of wood is this?
Is it a resin, or is it a veneer, or, not sure? Okay.
I'm not a simulator here.
But it's, it's not a simulated product. It's not a synthetic product? Is it natural wood? You think it's a synthetic product?
I have a floor in my office that's synthetic.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm...
That's okay.
Does anybody else from the public wanna have a look at that picture?
I also have from previous submission, a couple of the redrins have been provided. Everyone has to do that.
Um, maybe, maybe just put it on the, let, in case, if anyone wants from the public to look at it.
Yeah. Yeah, so, yeah. Right here. This one. And also on the plan. And also on the plan. Okay.
So where are we with this, John?
Uh, well, if, uh, unless, uh, if you have any more questions at this point, uh, we, we could just authorize a resolution to be prepared that I can sign later.
We, we drafted a resolution that is before you as well. The only thing we didn't fill out was what your decision really ended up being at the end. But we, we prepared all the chronological supporting documents and whatnot that would have been given to the board. It's the, therefore be it resolved that, um, on page two, that has a couple of options there. Whether it's approve, approve with modifications, or deny. So, I think it was, um, a little bit of a surprise with the wood here. Is that, is that what the planning board wants? You'd need to kinda give them that guidance. We could incorporate it into a, a resolution or as, as I had mentioned, we had approve with modifications. So we can handwrite something in here and finalize it, um, either way. They also gave a planting plan within the bigger plan set and then a planting palette and rendering from both angles on the curved islands. And the intent of that was to soften, uh, soften the look of it. And I, I had actually placed some of that information in the resolution as well.
It's just one island, right? Just one unit?
No, two. Two units on two islands.
On two islands, okay, thank you. Okay. Well, we're gonna put your name... Um, yeah, first, thank you. I appreciate your consideration of, we're not often listened to, but now clearly listening to us. And, but the, um, so, one, that I'm in concurrence with the wood appearance. It gives it an earthy tone and sort of tones down the visual impact of the, uh, the unit. And I think that's, that's in the spirit of our law, which is to try to keep these, to sort of downplay these. And, um, and I appreciate that gesture. And then, two, as far as the plantings go, um, I'm a little confused 'cause what you're showing in the, in the image is different than what's on the, on the plan.
It's the, the holly bush, correct?
Yeah.
In the location? So the plan itself is correct, the rendering, um, that bush?
Yeah, sweet pepper, Russian sage.
So that would actually be the holly bush would be in that one.
Oh, okay, all right, yeah. So, um, yeah, just the intent is to, um, and I guess this is more for code enforcement, but the intent is to, is to try to get those, that greenery shrub around the base of the unit to try to, um, buffer its hard edges and things like that. So I just would, you know, this is a, you know, a more of a, sort of a general plan, landscape plan. But when they, when our code enforcement officer, I don't know if we're inspecting this, but when we do, if we do, if they could just ensure that they meet that spirit, make sure the plants are planted such that it's softening the, it's close to the bottom of that pedestal. Um, and...
Just trying to hide the wood.
Oh, you wanna put so much, no, you don't wanna say.
Well, no, you'll still see the wood.
And the holly is nice because it's, it's throughout the fall and winter.
Exactly.
Who maintains the shrubbery?
Sorry, be shot.
Who maintains the shrubbery?
Well, that would be...
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Okay. But if it grows to the point where it falls, not going to?
Yeah.
That it, yeah, okay, no problem.
So the holly is what is on the plan.
Right.
It's, it's inkberry and it, and it's a, uh, it's a broadleaf evergreen, which is what I was suggesting. So that year round, it'll give us the, you know, the buffer. Um, the other plants are mostly perennial, um, or, um, and, uh, not perennial, they're, um, they're gonna lose their leaves and, and so, you know, whatever on the side of broadleaf evergreens, you know, so that we can have that appearance year round.
Less deciduous, you're asking for?
Yeah.
Less deciduous, yeah, more broadleaf evergreen, yeah, or, yeah. There's not a lot of low-browing evergreen, for the broadleaf evergreens, you can get small shrubs with.
Juniper.
But I mean, you know, I don't, I don't wanna take this too far. I think you guys have made a great advancement here and...
What would you like to do regarding the resolution?
Well, if, if they're amenable to Rob's suggestion that it's meeting the spirit of the landscaping, that you'd like to see more broadleaf evergreen though in place of some of the things that they proposed, we could mention that in the, in the resolution as a comment. Uh, it's not a document that we've reviewed, but it's a document that you would expect would be constructed.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't need to keep seeing this, um, as long as our town's okay with the, giving them latitude, you know?
And you're agreeable?
Absolutely. And the intent was to have those hollies around the stations to provide more coverage around the stations. And then the perennials to add a little bit more color and life and fill out the landscape island throughout. So regardless of what plantings we wanna see, will absolutely be amenable to those specific kinds for the entire landscape island of both islands.
Great. Yeah, no, I appreciate that. That's a good, those are all good ideas. You want it to look pretty in the summer too, so it's a good combination and a good variety. So just, I would go a little more intensive on the broadleaf evergreen, that's all. But the inkberries.
Great.
Should we then just maybe say that and just say, add?
You can just have me add that language in. We'll circulate it for your, for your review.
Great.
And then, uh, John will sign it and applicant owner have to sign it as well.
Okay.
So do you wanna pass the resolution as amended as we've discussed?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to pass the resolution as discussed.
Certainly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, the, there's two other real quick things there. Just to satisfy Fay, some of your earlier comments about PSAs. There was a little bit of a discussion of that at the last month's meeting that you missed. So do you, can you speak to the PSAs that Fay was requesting the public service announcements?
Yeah, specifically what we do is we like to offer municipalities, um, opportunity to work with us either through PSAs or if they have hold-ins for township events. Usually what we'll do is we'll provide you guys with a year of free, uh, space on our stations. Um, there's a certain number of flips I don't remember off the top of my head. Um, what we do give you guys a year.
What happens after the year?
Um, I don't necessarily have a full, um, answer for you guys. I think it depends on municipality and how many flips that you guys sign up with initially. So I can't speak to after the year.
So after, after the first year, then it, there would be a fee?
Well, if there's a fee, then I'm gonna just fall on Stop and Shop.
Well, I'm thinking about a fire, you know, if there's a warning station or a cooling, the fire department's doing that, it could be posted on there. That's what I'm looking for.
I understand that.
Or 12 Valley Road is closed. Find another way. Go ahead.
We could provide you guys with a full, um, pamphlet of usually what we provide townships and kind of explain the whole process and how it goes, um, for your package and after that. And who would contact you, how, we said all that.
I guess my question still remains, after the year, there's a, there's a fee involved.
I would just talk to my meeting and come back.
Okay. I mean, I, I don't see us, you know, once a week. I'm just saying if something happens and we wanna get the most amount of people aware of it, that would be a good thing is to have that available to us. I'm not saying the Boy Scouts are meeting on Tuesday, that we would be using it. I, I would think it'd be mostly for, uh, public awareness and emergency, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
So the program has the ability to alter, right?
Yes.
There... If that's the case, shouldn't we put something someplace to decide as maybe a general criteria, but also who's going to be in response, that is responsible for seeing that, uh, this, uh, public information is, uh, displayed at, on the boards?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, that, anything that goes to content, um, we really, this board should stay away from. Even if it is for public service, if it leads to a contract down the road between the, the town and the vendor, then that would be a matter for the town board to get involved in.
Right.
Not within the purview of this particular board.
But what I think I'm also hearing though is if we had a situation, we could reach out and they may consider just putting it on there.
I mean, it wouldn't be us that did it. I would envision maybe the fire department and the town board contacting the vendor to say, "We have a situation."
Fire ice is available, I said, need a fire.
Yeah, absolutely, all right.
Or there's a cooling station or food is available if we're out of power. 'Cause I know years ago, the fire districts provided food for people. And so it's, it's another way of getting it out. And again, I don't see it being used a lot, but available if necessary.
But that should be someplace noted so that when there is the need, that we can see somebody responsible to get that message out there.
That's you.
Well, no, we know what I'm saying.
Yeah, I do.
All right.
Thank you.
So, um... So the, the draft of the resolution will be circulated to the board and, and I'll sign it when I receive it.
I'm not done. I got one more. I, I actually emailed Ally about this today. Fire Advisory Board had a meeting this morning.
Right.
And they had asked that the front left side of Stop and Shop where the conduit goes, it's coming along the side of the building, goes underground from there.
Yes.
They had asked if there was an opportunity to put a shut-off there in case there was a fire or something going on there. So that they could run over, shut it off there as opposed to running into the Stop and Shop all the way to the back left, finding the breaker, turning it off, then running out and fighting fire. So, uh, can you just explain that response from today?
Absolutely. So per code requirements, disconnect switches are not required to be on the face of the building for equipment 250 volts and lower, whereas our stations are pulling from 240 volt power. Similar to common appliances like electric, uh, drying machines and water heaters, for example. So being that we're in a code compliance with our design, we have not specified a physical switch on the exterior of the building of the Stop and Shop.
But could you?
Um, I mean, it's a switch, so it could be made. It's just very not typical. It's extremely atypical for level two chargers.
What would happen to this switch? Could I go up and turn it off?
We, if there was a switch, we would definitely design it in such a way that, um, it's...
You have to have a key or something?
Has to have an intent for it to be turned off. The purpose of a disconnect switch was that if there was a problem.
Okay.
Anyone that could be able to access it. So ideally, it wouldn't be locked, in my opinion. However, it would not be, for example, in a place where young kids could just come up and turn it off. It would be raised a bit.
In a knock box or something like that.
Yeah.
Like a break box?
I think, I think you could do a knox lock of some sort.
Right.
Which, uh, would restrict everything to emergency services.
So you've considered it. Is this something that you're willing to do? Is there a need? I'm curious if there, if there's a history of, of delayed responses to shutting it off in the event of a problem or what?
Ideally, in the event of a problem, the breaker would trip, resulting in the power being shut off to the stations. And again, for level two chargers for 240 volt power, we typically do not see many, or really, my personal experience, any issues thankfully. All the ones that we've designed have not had issues personally with the project I've been working on. But again, these are emergencies that happen. They do happen sometimes, but we don't foresee any issues with level two chargers currently.
You're not talking about a high voltage anyway, are you?
It's 240. So level three chargers are 480 volts. And those all have disconnect switches. This is a step down. This is a level two charger with 240. And these panels are already in Stop and Shop. They're there already supplying power to your appliances in the Stop and Shop. So, um, it's very common for those appliances not to have disconnect switches. Some do and some don't. And for level two chargers like these ED stations, they do not. And it's just the very typical design that we have for all of our sites.
My, uh, my compressor, right? I have a, uh, a duct heat pump, right? And there's a cutoff switch there in addition to the breaker box. So I think that's the fire department's concern.
That was their concern. They, they've heard of fires, um, you know, and, and they looked at the plans for the Stop and Shop. They realized that they had to go all the way to the back left through the building to be able to turn it off or whatever.
So what do you say?
They're not gonna spray any water until they know that electric's off. That's, that's the thing, right? Pete, I mean, you can...
Are you okay with us being the first?
Absolutely.
Prevent a problem?
Sure thing.
In the event of an emergency that happens?
Yeah, we do not want an emergency, so we can absolutely put a switch there.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
To have that taken care of. If I may ask, is there any preference from the fire department on where physically they want that? Or is that up to our discretion?
It would make sense to do it, you know, where it's not actually creating any more length. So right where it's going down into the ground on the left-hand side as you're facing the building.
Yeah, it'd be in line with the current conduit run, so it's not gonna be out of the way. It'd be obvious to where that would be for emergency access.
And it just might be that there's, you know, a locking mechanism on it that the fire department has a key for or a knox box or whatnot, so...
Uh, there's gotta be some, I'm not certain, Dan, but there's gotta be some sort of a blocking system because the...
Yeah, you can't have people tampering.
The fire department has control with the, um, traffic light right there at the intersection when the light goes out. So that we have access to hook the generator up so that the light will, you know, so the light will continue.
Sounds good. Yep. All right. Excellent.
Safety would be, um, a knox.
Right. Knox key.
Item, key. Good luck.
Yeah, Stop and Shop probably already has a knox box on it. It's a matter of just putting the extra key in there. Right?
Right.
Yeah.
I would think so at least. I wouldn't, I wouldn't see a reason to have another knox box.
That's a knox box. Yeah.
As long as the issue is addressed.
Yeah.
The, the firemen will have a unique key. That opens all of them, all commercial buildings.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Thanks so much. Have a great night.
You too. Enjoy your night. Okay, Green Haven Solar Community. So we're here to determine secret determinations? Good evening.
Hi.
How are you today?
Good. So since the last time we were here, yeah, obviously talked about fulfilling some of our, closing out some of the comments that have been lingering with Dan. So we set up a meeting with Dan. We discussed the comments to confirm path forward. And we made a preliminary submission to Dan's team before we submitted to the town for a comment. We did mark out all of the trees on the entire site, I believe over 15 inches for potentially, potential for removal for the planning board to go out and look at. I don't know if anybody went out and looked at them. We did change our tree clearing plan to avoid cutting trees along declining property. So we are going to leave that existing vegetation, which I went out there today and took some photos of it. It's pretty thick. There's also to find, you know, whole types of, of the bridge line. We are leaving proposed landscaping lower 12-foot-high shrub type landscaping there, but we didn't remove the taller trees from our landscaping plan because they're not going to grow very well. We need the trees that are already there, and we had to set them back. We're going to leave all those trees there and then save the raw, shaded solar panels. So we're setting our panels to set that fire enough to not really appreciate it too badly. They already should some, some, you know, existing vegetation, but my thought was that we should leave that vegetation because we do have enough distance, and it's already a very, you know, full vegetated buffer to decline property. So we did reduce those trees, or reduce the tree clearing in that location. We added notes to the plans to specify the 12-feet trees from the root ball to the top of this one, along the dijon property. We added notes to, for the contractor to walk the proposed fence line with the fire advisory board to decide where the supplemental stones for emergency vehicles should go. And we responded to all the engineering comments that Dan's team had. I feel like we did a pretty substantial job with that. We did have some additional comments sent last night, but we did respond to a couple of those in email form to Dan. And I personally think we've met most, met all of the requirements to, for outstanding seeker items that the town would be concerned about. But I guess our goal here tonight would be to, you know, talk through any remaining seeker concerns and hopefully get a vote on seeker so we could, you know, keep this thing moving.
Did the additional mowing, was that discussed?
Yeah, he was just mentioning about the emails.
He was just talking about the dialogue?
Right. They really, you know, kudos to the applicant on really taking control of the plan because it had been previously, was just really dragging through and wasn't really getting addressed. So we appreciated seeing the progress that was made. And I generally agree that the seeker process can move forward based on the documents that have been provided to us to date now. I've provided a draft, Part Two and Part Three for your consideration. That's a fore you. Really, what we did, and this really goes with the spirit of how Rob likes to look at seeker, we identified some of those areas that really could have been potentially large impacts. And we really focused it on three areas. The impacts on surface water, item 3D, which is the proposed action may involve construction within or adjoining a freshwater or tidal wetland or in the better banks of any other water body. As you know, we've got Frog Hollow Brook, DEC stream. We've also got a number of other channels through the property that are federally and town-regulated. The applicant has, in my opinion, sufficiently avoided impacts to those areas in as much as possible. 3H is another impact on surface water where it says the proposed action may cause soil erosion. And I'm reading off of Part Three if you want to follow along. "May cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead to siltation or other degradation of receiving water bodies." So, you know, in all these iterations that we've done, they've gone through the SWIP, we weren't satisfied with the SWIP until Greg took charge of it and really started showing us the details and the nuts and bolts that we needed to say that it does work without, you know, what we were worried about was after the full design, because it was a partial design, that they'd be encroaching onto the water bodies and whatever else with the sizes of it. So being that they've now gotten to a point where we're satisfied with that, we feel that that was a mitigation to a potentially large impact to those areas. It's a stormwater pollution prevention plan that's designed in accordance with state regulations to deal with stormwater quality and quantity, and also to deal with soil erosion sediment control. The third item we identified was an impact on plants and animals, 7B. The proposed action may result in a reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any rare, threatened, or endangered species. So the hits on this property were Indiana bat and bog turtle. They've implemented, self-implemented a tree clearing restriction for when the bats are in the hibernacula. So that's a great way to avoid impact to the bats during their foraging, when they're out. They're out normally in the spring, summer, and fall. In winter, they go away. So there's a tree clearing period in November to April or so that's on the plans, and they've implemented that. The other was bog turtle. DEC has noted that they are generally in the area potentially. I think they have a, I think that they almost basically said that they're pretty sure that they are in the area. But the applicant has done two things. They've provided, through actually part of the stormwater pollution prevention plan, a silk fence on the low side, the stream side. And the DEC has had a chance to look at that, and they actually said that that's one great deterrent for the bog turtle entering the construction area. The other thing is, is that there's a bog turtle education encounter plan. This plan will be provided to contractors, any subcontractors, everybody on the site. It's written on the plan as well that there's a potential for it. And the encounter plan shows colored pictures, what you're supposed to do, tells you how to react if you find that turtle on the site. So we feel sufficiently satisfied that they're doing all they can to mitigate that potential impact to that endangered species. Feel free to, you know, chime in on any of the other Part Two potential impacts that you see. I can let you know how they may have addressed that in the past, or Greg can certainly.
I've read the deficiency letter and read through your assessment. So I'm satisfied at this point.
Is there still a public hearing open, or were that we closed?
No, that's been closed.
And the, one of the big issues
Yeah, really, at some point, we needed them to give us the information as a lead agency on a type-one action, a coordinated review of a type-one action. We needed to be able to be in that position to make that environmental determination. And that allows them to go to the zoning board of appeals. The zoning board of appeals on a coordinated review shouldn't be doing their own determination until the secret determination was made by this board.
So they should be happy.
Yeah.
As much as they can.
They, I'm sure they will be.
So what stage are we at? We've done a preliminary site approval already, or that's what we're
No, there hasn't been a preliminary approval. It's, the public hearing's been closed. They waived the 62-day period to have to make a decision based on the fact that they knew they were going to have to go to the ZBA, and that we are still tinkering with the environmental determination. So really, at this point, it's a matter of environmental determination that allows them to go to the ZBA. If they secure their variance, as they come back here, that's when we start working on preliminary site plan approval and conditional final site plan and special use permit approvals.
This item nine, impact on aesthetic resources, is that done correctly? Because they're all no or small impact, but it's marked yes at the top.
Yeah, I just, you know, I thought that there was some potential for aesthetic resources to be impacted, but I didn't think that it was going to be a tremendous impact. And generally, the site is about 1.4 miles from the Appalachian Trail as the crow flies. So that was kind of where that came from. It's just, you know, a recognition that there's an aesthetic resource, but also a recognition that this really probably will not create much of a visual impact to that aesthetic resource. So I went with the no or small impact. Of course, it's really, you guys fill this out. I just try to assist.
All right, I'm in concurrence with the environmental assessment form. Me as well. I trust you, Rob, and you have more expertise. So I'll make a motion to approve the, what do we say? Were we adopting or approving the, I always forget. A motion to approve the environmental assessment form?
It's a
Oh, no, I'm making a motion for a negative declaration, right?
Right, or a determination of non-significance, either or is.
It's
Public hearing's closed.
It was closed.
Your lawyer said last meeting it can be reopened at any time.
It was closed on this. I think, well, you guys go ahead and talk about that if you
The lawyer said that at last meeting.
Mr. Klein, if you'd like to make a comment, I'm not opposed to it.
Will Payne, 254 Gardner Hollow Road. The, what they've done to, the proposal, what they've done to mitigate the threat to the endangered species is during construction. They did not talk, there's nothing about the habitat loss for the endangered species, the ongoing habitat loss. So that is a concern. You cannot cut down 300 trees without affecting the environment. I think it's preposterous to think that, but the specifics is, yeah, during construction, they're not bothering them by, you keep the construction to a certain area, but this is where they live.
Understood.
It is a threat to endangered species.
Thank you.
If you'll give me the opportunity.
You're welcome, Mr. Payne. I can't say no, but I would like to just make a comment that, you know, this has been a long process. The applicant has met our laws, okay? I'm sure all of us have opinions, but we're not here to share our opinion. We're here to follow the law. The applicant has worked considerably hard to meet that law at this point. And the public hearing was open for quite some time. So we are at a point now where we have to vote according to what they've submitted and the way our law is written, regardless of our opinions. So, anyway, since I opened it up to, would anybody else like to speak? Because I've kind of broken the rules here, and it's unorthodox, but I'd like to limit comments.
All right.
If we're going to do that, I think we should formally open up the public hearing and then close it afterwards.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's not advertised.
Yeah.
You wasn't advertised.
I'm the applicant. So that's what the board would like to do. You can reopen your purpose.
I mean, that's basically what you're doing. So I think we should probably handle it more formally and just say
Okay. Is there a motion? Oh, the applicant? Right. Okay.
Right, no need for the applicant.
No need, right. Thank you. Your name and address, please.
Carolyn Dixon, 97 South Green Haven Road.
Thank you.
To address that, we farmed the area. There was no habitat. We utilized all the acres that they're using.
Please address the board, yeah, if you'd like. Thank you.
We hate it. We knocked down everything. There were less trees, and the farm is now rendered useless. So to put in a solar farm and benefit the town and exceed, you know, bring up more tax revenue, I don't see what's wrong with that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Appreciate it. All right. So at this point, we move to adopting. Did we vote?
Not yet.
I didn't really make the motion.
So can I have a motion? Would you like to help us with the motion, please?
The motion would be for determination of non-significance.
So a motion
So moved.
Okay. A motion for non-significance has been put on the floor by Rob LePain. Is there a second?
I haven't really looked entirely, but you've looked at the assessment form?
Yeah. Yeah, they filled it out accurately.
All right, I'll follow your guidance. I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, okay, that was everybody, right? Yes. Yes. Okay. So it's unanimously approved. All right.
Yep. Off to zoning.
They go to the zoning board.
And there's nothing more to discuss?
There's another public hearing there, so people have plenty of opportunity to continue to speak.
At the zoning board of appeals. Right. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Do you know when that meeting ends? I'll just look at it. It's next, at the end of the month, or it's next?
It's, what, first Thursday? First Thursday of the month? I don't know if
I think we need to set out notices. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Yeah, call Colleen Hayes. Okay?
Good evening. Good evening. So just to recap a little bit, I'm Steve Whalen, Wellon Architecture. I'm joined tonight by Chris Jones, CEO of Sparrows Mask. We left invented in July, so we've had a lot of development since then. Our engineer has been working diligently on designing well in the septic. We've also provided drawings of those designs, which are still in progress. We have received a list of comments from Dan Kohler's office. And what I'd like to do is if I could just hit on like some of those comments. I do have answers for, I think, all of them. We do have a copy of the deed. It's forthcoming. Kristin, right now, is in the process of buying this land. So once she's got that deed formalized, we will submit it to the board. We do have that note on there about regarding events. We will take that off. Additional topo information is going to be added. Right now, we just have it, it's like it's in progress. We just want to get everything formalized, the septic design and the layout. There's a couple other items on here that I want to go over. That's why we haven't formalized the topography on there just yet. We'll add the planning board block, the limited disturbance of that. I spoke to our engineer this week. Right now, we're right on the cusp of about an acre. So, and I know there's one of the other comments on here about parking. So, and I know I kind of like overdesigned it. We have like too many parking spaces. So we're going to bring it down to like what the code allows. Maybe we'll be like one or two over, so that we have like overflow. But if we eliminate like five parking spaces but if we eliminate like five parking spaces, that's a thousand square feet, that's going to put us under the one acre of disturbance. So we should, I'm like 95% confident that we will be under a one acre of disturbance in talking to our engineer, so that we wouldn't need SWAP, but we'll confirm all that. Landscaping is in development, Chris is in the process of retaining a landscape engineer. The same with lighting, I'm working with the engineer, we're working on the lighting to get all the photometric's put on there. Parking, yeah, we're going to add all the information, like the dimensions, the layout, we'll just continue to add more and more information to the drawings. The aqua fire overlay information, that's also forthcoming, we'll add the spot elevations, the dimensions of the building, the delivery path, which I'll touch on again, for the trucks that they're going to be delivering food, yeah, and of course, inward elevations, the location of the refuse container, the parking lot location, I know there was a comment on there about possibly putting the parking lot in the back of the building, the reason that we put it in the front is that kind of goes back to the limited disturbance, we just, we didn't want to have this long access drive, and also just to kind of like free up the backyard, they're going to have like plantings or gardens in the back of, just trying to keep the back of the building green. Yeah, we'll note that all utilities will be underground. Couple other comments, the agricultural data statement, that's forthcoming. Hearing disturbance, we talked about that, and then, yeah, we will coordinate the well location with property that's to the east. We've got to address, those are the like the major comments.
Yeah, if you notice what I do with the review letters, is I always put in a section of the code if there is one.
Yep.
So just refer to that, because I use it as a checklist.
Okay.
If it's not there, I put it in my letter, so, so the requirements are there, particularly lighting and landscaping, there's some specific stuff, particularly because you're in the town center district here, so just, you know, have them go off of that for their design.
Okay.
And then I can just check it. The question about the parking in the rear of the building, it's a town center code section and it says should, so I don't think it requires a variance, but I thought I would defer to my legal friend over here who can maybe put in a better determination than me.
Should means that this board have, that could exercise some discretion.
Right.
Would that be a garden center?
No.
Part of the reason it was like that was because it was also, you remember some of the early discussions, we talked about it being angled similar to the Beekman Library, which is across the street.
Right.
It's kind of this, almost like a streetscape feel that was being proposed there.
You mean, that's why the code was written?
That's why they have, that's part of the reason why they have parking in the front.
I see.
The code was written because they wanted a streetscape effect.
Right.
And not sea parking from the road.
Right.
But not every piece of property lends itself to that.
Right, especially, and you have double entrances and all that sort of thing as well, and...
So to that, what we're planning on doing is like per the plans that we've, but like right now the landscaping, we haven't determined like the species of everything that we're going to be planting there, but right now the lot, there's not a lot of trees on there, so when we're done, there's actually going to be more trees on the lot than is there now. So, and we plan on hiding the parking. We're going to run a row of trees, you know, deciduous, coniferous, all the way around the perimeter, so, you know, during the summer, spring, you're really not going to be able to see it, during the winter, a little bit more, but, you know, but that's up to the board, I mean, we could just do, you know, coniferous trees all the way around.
Well, there's also islands as well, right?
Yep.
And maybe that's something, I don't know how...
And we got room, we can land islands in the parking lots.
Oh, island, oh, yeah.
Not like a, not a water feature, where you have an island and like a love boat sort of thing? I was thinking more... Right.
I think the one thing that I noticed was that the building was moved from the last submittal.
That's not...
We didn't move it on our plans, I'll have to check with the engineer.
Because that, well, the rear yard setback is, do we...
We can adjust that, so we're in compliance.
Yeah, that's a, that was actually, because of those supplemental regulations, it has that different front yard, which we've talked about ad nauseam almost, but then the side and the rear yards are also altered in this for charitable foundation facility.
Yes.
So that will need to either meet code or you'd have to get a variance on that as well, so. It's really, in my opinion, it's giving us enough again, so that we can do a seeker determination, so you can go and deal with that variance issue, which is almost more of an interpretation really, because it's a zero to 15 foot in the town center, as we've talked about in the front, but the supplemental regulations say 100-foot front yard setback is required for this type of use. So I think that they're really meeting the spirit of the code, but I think the, is it the zoning board that needs to make that determination, or is it the building inspector interpretation? Yeah, because the underlying zoning district says zero to 15 feet, but for this particular use, which is a specially permitted use in the town center zoning district, it has a separate front yard requirement of 100 feet. So normally they want zero to 15, but for a charitable foundation facility, they want 100. ZBA interpretation, is it interpretation at this point, or a variance?
Area variance.
Okay, so if that's the case, then we'll have to get to that point where we do the seeker determination here, again, that's typical, we do the coordinated reviews here. But obviously, before you get too crazy with landscaping and lighting, you want to make sure that that layout is set as good as you can in terms of meeting the setbacks, but also providing sewage disposal and whatnot too, so. Andy's a very competent engineer, he'll, I'm sure he'll have to work directly with the health department at some point to come up with flow confirmation, so that he can size that.
Yep.
Okay, so that was based on a flow confirmation letter already from the health department?
Yep.
Okay, so that's important, so that won't be changing size really, so it's really a matter of maybe tightening up that area, because you are close to that area, the one acre, and by having one acre, you might end up disturbing one and a half, because you might need stormwater controls. The other thing you might need to consider then, if it's just going to run down towards Clove Valley Road, it's a county road, is just having a preliminary conversation with them as to, because they may have some issues with that. We did do a lead agency circulation, we have not heard back from anybody that objected to the board acting as lead agency, so the board could make that determination this evening if they choose to do so.
Just for my clarification, so is this going to require a variance or an interpretation?
Craig believes of a variance.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's written two ways.
Out of curiosity, why is there two setbacks, one for non-for-profit versus a commercial profit business?
Just because it's a supplemental regulation, supplemental regulations are associated with special use permits, so we have supplemental regulations for gas stations, we have supplemental regulations for charitable foundation facilities, you know, we have supplemental regulations that are associated with accessory apartments, so. It's just, it's just a different level of criteria that the code requires.
So what you need this evening is for us to declare ourselves as lead agency?
Well, intent, intent.
No, they, we've already circulated.
Yeah.
Yep, so the requisite period has gone by.
No, we don't need to do that.
We don't need to?
It's already been...
Oh, okay, all right.
So you can declare yourself lead agency.
So the motion is to declare ourselves?
To declare ourselves as lead agency.
I'll second your first motion.
Okay, is there a first?
Me.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I did make a comment about setbacks on this particular project, I have to take a look again to make sure, the spirit and intent of this particular designation was for a possible like accessory residential use.
Caretaker, is what it says, yeah.
Yeah, and that is obviously not the case in this particular application, and if it's possible to avoid, you know, ping ponging back and forth between the ZBA and the planning board, obviously, and, you know, if there's discretion there, I'll advise the board of that.
Very good, thank you. Is there anything more?
It's really, it's really a question of, you know, normally at this point, we would consider setting a public hearing, but I think what we found is that we got to be careful with our public hearings, make sure that they're, you know, that there's enough information
before we...
So that there's not continued design, so...
Because this could push them off to November, right?
Right, so it's a matter of when they think they can come up with the responses to the maximum extent possible.
Would it be possible for us to vote pending your determination? So could we, could we vote on scheduling the public hearing and then before they circulate, if there was a problem that you uncovered?
Well, you could always circulate to the ZBA as preferable, actually, even if they don't go there, they at least...
No, we, okay, two different things here, circulated for lead agency, we did that, it did go to the ZBA. He's talking about the mailings.
Talking about the mailings.
Certified mailings.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's normally what, 10 days?
Right.
10 days prior is the mailing, is in the ad and the journal. You know, I just don't want to go down that rabbit hole of having public hearings where there's still design stuff going on, but, so...
So you, so it's more than just the, this determination, you want more design information?
Yeah, it matters for stormwater, they really need to kind of tighten up the design to make sure, because that's, again, that's another, that's a different level of permitting that we have to consider.
Understood.
And people should know about that in the public, if that's going to be, you know, you can't just have a public hearing, close it, and then all of a sudden, you know, the design changes so much that there's a pond in somebody's backyard and they say, I wish I would have been able to comment on that.
Right.
And now I wasn't able to, so.
Understood.
It's kind of a, there's a balance in there of having enough information without slowing down the process, but also, you know, taking your time as a planning board.
Uh, that's okay, we're happy to be here.
So are we able...
I love these guys.
Are we able then to go to ZBA, take care of the variances while we're still like tightening up the design, working with the health department, so that we can come back to the planning board and have all these items addressed?
That's the, that's exactly what Dan is suggesting. This way then, at the next meeting, depending on our attorney's determination, whether you have to go to the zoning board or not, we'll be able to then decide whether we're going to schedule the public hearing or not.
We have to get to a point where the information is sufficient for them to make an environmental determination, because it's a coordinated review. ZBA can't make their determination without this board's environmental determination for seeker.
So we need more information, is what we're saying?
Right.
Okay.
How soon would we be able to determine whether they needed a variance or not?
Let's get through one step at a time.
Yeah, Craig has to get to his office and review, review the laws.
I can say that the charitable foundation section of the law was, I think it was contemplated that it would be for larger tracts of land, not in the town center.
Right.
Okay, and this is a smaller tract of land, it just doesn't lend itself to, you know, meeting, naturally meeting these setback requirements. So unfortunately, the property's small.
Right.
And if I had to make a, you know, a recommendation to this board at this moment, if you put a gun to my head, I would err on the side of caution and, you know, direct the applicant to the ZBA.
Right.
For that, so if you want to, you know, schedule a public hearing, I guess we could do so with the eye toward, you know, ZBA variance on that side setback.
Yeah, the intent would be to hear some public comment and have them continue to forge forward with the plan, to bring it to a point where we can make that environmental determination after we close the public hearing, and then they'd be on their way.
Keep the momentum going.
Right.
So, you know, the question is, is that you got, let's see, when's the, the next submittal, for the October meeting would be, I think it's October 3rd, let me see here. Yeah, it's October 3rd, so you're looking at, you know, a little over two weeks.
Two weeks.
Yeah.
That's when the zoning board of appeal meets.
No, two weeks to get back to us.
Okay, understood.
With a, with more design, is that enough that we can hold the public hearing, or are we going to be adjourning it, because there's not going to be enough, that's, you know, it's kind of, the onus is on the applicants and their professionals, it's two short weeks.
To get all the information put together to go before ZBA, or to...
To come back here.
Come back here for a public hearing.
Yeah, and meet all of his comments in his deficiency letter.
No, it's not, it's not necessarily everyone, like I'm saying, the lighting and landscaping, I don't expect to have the Cadillac right now, I mean, put some concept of where you're going to put some things for now. It's about this board being able to make the environmental determination, so that you can go to the ZBA.
Well, we can definitely like solidify like the area of disturbance, we'll dial that in, just so it's not like a placeholder right now, and like all the other stuff, inward elevations, you know, more information on parking lot, dimensions, et cetera, et cetera, yeah, landscaping and lighting, that could all come later.
Yeah, and like I said, the idea is to get it far enough along. So that you can get that determination from them, so then you know, you can put all the nuts and bolts into it for the rest of this board's process.
So let them come back next month.
Right.
With updates.
Yep.
And then if we're satisfied with it and everything, after that, we schedule a public hearing. Is that what I'm hearing?
It's either that, or, you know, if you feel like you need four weeks, you know, this board can set a public hearing in November in anticipation you submit on October 31st for the November meeting, and then you have a lot of time to really figure out all those other little intricacies and...
I'll tell you what, if I could, I'll talk to my engineer tomorrow, if I don't get him tomorrow, I'll talk to him on Monday, can I let you know definitively by then, Monday the latest, just saying, hey, look, we got an October 3 deadline to get...
They'd have to set the date now, though.
Oh, they would?
Yeah.
All right, then I'm going to constantly say, you know, mine coffee, we'll get it, we'll get it done by the 3rd.
Donuts, too.
I think we're rushing.
We're going to rush, are we?
No, they have to rush, we don't have to rush.
You're going to come back at the next meeting?
Yes, the next meeting in October, right.
And then we can keep the public hearing open.
And then we can keep the public hearing.
We can keep the public hearing open.
But if I understand what the engineer was saying, we'd like to see that there is sufficient, there's more detail, if we will, or more information that is going to be available for the public.
And if they, if they miss that mark, what we'll do is, we'll use the Pete approach, okay, because you codified this, all right, and we'll adjourn it for the following month. It's forever going to be called that, just so you know. It's, it's forever gonna be called that, just so you know.
And if I may, a lot of these items, we've already partially addressed, we just gotta solidify them.
Right.
I feel like we're going round and round in this discussion and all we're, all we're deciding is you're just gonna proceed.
Yeah.
Come to the next meeting with more information that'll give us the ability to make our decision.
Right, right, and we're gonna.
That's all this is.
And, and we're gonna.
It's as simple as that.
And we're, but we're gonna vote on a public hearing, uh, tonight. And then if they don't meet those, those items that are, that are important, we'll adjourn the public, uh, meeting so that, that, that the public has an opportunity to comment on their, on their changes and then.
But we're setting the public meeting for November.
So you're saying, you're saying you wanna, you're suggesting, what month is this?
September.
Right, so you're suggesting a public hearing for, uh, October or November, John?
That's for you.
Rob is saying, Rob is saying November.
Yeah, you said, you said November 15th or October 15th?
Well, the options are.
Yeah.
That you give them more time to come in with a robust package that.
An October or November?
If, if we schedule it for October.
Can we meet that?
You'll be able to meet it.
We ready?
Yep. The concerns.
Yeah, cause she's right on the cusp of purchasing.
Now, if there's any issues, then we will extend it and adjourn it to November.
Right.
Which if we don't, then what that would do is, uh, that would prevent them from, from meeting with the zoning board of appeals in November. So i- it's, it's a matter of whether or not, uh, they can commit to, to providing the work.
I would like to make a motion to set a public hearing for October.
Yeah, October planning board meeting.
October 20th.
October 20th.
Right.
For this project.
Yes.
That's a motion.
Do I have a second? I'll second it if I'm allowed, am I, is, am I allowed?
Sure.
Yeah.
You're a member of the board.
There you go, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so we have three and an abstention, was that?
Go ahead and schedule your meeting all week for it.
Okay.
You gotta get your.
It was three ayes and a delayed aye.
Four ayes.
Four ayes, okay. Very good.
So we're good?
We're good. Alright?
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
And that's the 500-foot radius for the advertising.
Okay.
But Colleen will be able to.
It's up to them.
Give you the package of what needs to be sent out.
Is the.
Cause it, it's for subdivisions or a, a site plan and specialties for me.
Are the offices still closed on Friday?
Yeah. Yeah.
And.
We don't. Oh, yeah. No, you gotta have the public, oh, absolutely.
Yeah, that could actually push them. Did we meet, did we meet December?
Yeah.
You do.
Absolutely.
During Christmas week, right?
Absolutely.
Usually lands before Christmas.
Before.
You good?
Maybe it's during.
Okay, um, and we have Town Center Grove for discussion.
Brian, I didn't know you could talk so softly.
I can do a lot of questions.
I couldn't hear you.
So, anything, um, what we have here is a Town Center Grove project. We're here looking for a, 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 a plan endorsement for our application headed in the next, uh, new on the project. We have a whole, a site plan. Um, this is a little further up, Town Center Grove on the right-hand side after the previous application. So, four years of further up, right-hand side. And as a result, we have a lot of business of the project. This is putting that path, these are two full multi-family home, um, buildings, these are four, neither reach, private located within TC zone. And then you have some, uh, 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 uh. Again, we're here, we're here for sketch, we've got, we've got, we've got certain purposes, so.
Well, the microphone's on, sorry.
That's clear, my ears.
Cleaned him out.
I'm done.
Sorry about that.
As per TC requirements, um, they've encouraged homes and buildings to be toward the front of the property. So in accordance with that, we're actually showing very tight setback on front of these properties, uh, buildings, long front Town Center. What we propose is sheer wildlife that actually come between the buildings and can't afford sort of TC, um, guidelines. We're proposing, um, two parking areas in rear of the existing buildings.
How many parking spots do you have there? Are they delineated?
No. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Six per lot, right?
Four, four dwellings?
Four dwellings. Yeah, we have one providing more.
Okay.
The fact when I, when I made it out, we're saying I have more, but I think it's one and a half per unit.
I think so. It was, yeah, it was two for, uh, one for every two units, was like, kind of like a guest parking and then I think it was one per plus that, so.
So, for, you know, very important to add that, I think for potential purposes, it makes sense to do that. One for sure, um, in terms of, um, soils, we have soils actually on the property, that's what I call the park, that is for our application. Um, they're proposing individual levels, any G D's property, each of them will be surplus after, so it's local systems. And then we'll be having a stormwater, um, debating system, uh, lower end of this existing lot. That will capture the bigger stormwater off both properties, we're proposing a common easement, you know, and it will allow for maintenance purposes. Um, I went through a, a deck copy of, uh, whether, whether by hand, it's, uh, uh, kind of, again, it's kind of checklist. I'll give it to Town Code and we'll look forward on that and move forward on this. Uh, I didn't see anything in front of the, in particular, any issue that could come out that we would commit, if we have something going here, we'll commit that for that, like, no. I mean, I understand that the planning board now serves as director of the board for the town. So we are in the process of evolving elevation, we're gonna, we're gonna make an attempt to try and, uh, try and match a little bit what's going on out there, so a lot comes together. But one for sure, that's the proposal, um, and, um, we'll look forward to, uh, your comment.
How many, how many stories?
Oh, two.
I have a question.
Please, Miss Corredo.
Miss Corredo, she came first, I'm sorry.
Seriously, I.
No chivalry there.
No, go ahead, Pete, I'll defer.
I would like to see the buildings setback further from the road.
That's, but the thing of it is, that's the Town Center streetscape.
That's, alright, that's the Town Center streetscape and so far we have.
Haven't done it.
Haven't done it.
Right.
And the reason for setting these back is because Sparrow's Nest is gonna be setback. The library is setback and I think that the.
It's the next one.
Uh, current requirement for the proximity to the road is too close to the road in general and crowds. And I think that it would aesthetically be better if the, if the buildings were setback, uh, a little more from the road.
Would that require a variance?
I don't know, what did we do, what did we do with, um, Dollar General?
Variance.
Yeah.
Huh?
Variance, area, area variance, yeah.
Sparrow's Nest needs that as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, so far, Sparrow's Nest was that unique situation because it's got that supplemental regulation that calls for a further setback, but sounds like they're gonna be going to ZBA for, out of an abundance of caution to, to the process.
But the difference between this and Dollar General is they wanted to put the parking in the front.
Right.
So, is there any, can we just move it back a little bit?
I'm not, yeah, I'm not, Rob, I'm not saying a lot, but if, uh, Michael, what is, um, what's the current, how close are they supposed to be to the edge of the road?
Zero to 15 feet is the setback.
setback is 15 feet.
And you, you're proposing at 15 right now or?
And it's, it's, it's the code calls between zero and the area.
Right.
Oh, you have to be between zero and 15?
Right.
Now, we're gonna put a, uh.
And he's at the max.
Sidewalk.
15th max, zero.
Put a sidewalk in?
So if he wants to go to 20, he's gotta go for a variance.
Right.
Okay.
15.1 is a variance.
So are we gonna, are we gonna put a sidewalk in? You should put a sidewalk in in this particular case of some sort because the proximity to the library.
And the rec area.
Thank you, and the rec area.
You don't want people walking in the road.
But, but because of this, because of that, um, I think that personally, I think things should be setback.
They're still here.
Chair, I have a question.
Yeah.
And forgive me for this, is there a deed restriction on this property?
It's actually the third lot, Miss Corredo.
Oh, it's not this one?
It's not the second.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
This is good.
It is, it is your lot? Yours has a deed restriction on it?
No.
No, yeah.
This is the second lot on the road.
Right, yeah, right.
None of these?
Well, we've asked for the deed, so we'll, we'll take a look at it when we get it to.
Okay.
But, uh, my memory.
Are they owned by the same people?
No.
No?
Do you own the third lot? Graziano? Yeah?
What's your deed?
Yeah, what's the deed on?
What's your deed restriction?
I heard only single, I haven't researched a single family home.
Yeah.
But in terms of the deed restriction, um, that's, that's kind of on the deed, but not something.
Enforcing.
Town, actually, private town law, that appears to be.
Okay.
I'm beginning to wonder, you know, we were trying, somebody said that in this zone, the house should be 100%. So we provided as far as we could, in accordance with that code. Yeah, we have, we have certain rooms in the back, we provide, and I, yeah, you put that, and somebody in the profile, this is a long, this is a, this is, but we have, that's, that's.
I think there should be a sidewalk in front. For some means. And I think that it should be setback, um, further and even maybe further more because of the sidewalk in front. I mean, what the hell, it's a dead end road.
Well, it's, it's, it makes sense, yeah, and, uh, you know, we were having a little side conversation and we, although we didn't discuss it with Sparrow's Nest, it is in Dan's letter to them, the sidewalk.
Yeah, it's, it's.
In regards to addressing.
The Town Center encourages walkability and, and they want sidewalks on all the properties.
So it wouldn't be a sidewalk to nowhere. Um, there, there are kids that will be going, you know, to the park and it would serve, it would serve a good purpose, so you're right, Pete.
But as far as moving it back, Pete, and I'm not trying to disagree with you, but he's come in with a plan that, that our ordinance is asking for. We would be, hold, let me finish, please. He would, he would, we're asking him to go for a variance, the owner, I, I can't, we, I, I don't see how we can ask them to break our own rules. Now, if they asked us and said, well, I wanna move it back, and we may be favorable to that.
Because part of, part of the stuff is aesthetics.
Yes.
And it.
But that's what.
Well, Mike.
And it's gonna look, it's going to look terrible, crowded within 15 feet of the road. You're gonna, you're gonna have, you're gonna have, uh, something just like, uh.
That's what they want. But that's what they wanted, that's the idea, is to create.
Pete, you don't, you don't get to rethink that.
Village.
The, the spirit of that zone was decided when we did the comp plan and when we, uh, there was, there's a whole, I, I don't wanna get into a whole rational.
And the spirit of that is, is 15 to 20 years old.
Now, there is one other.
Now, our zoning ordinance might say every subdivision should have paving. Uh, Rob Lopene can't come in and say, well, I don't like paving, I don't think any of these should be paved, right? Can I say that?
Well, there is one other, Fay brought up a good point.
Fair fire.
I, I don't recall, but no, Fay brought up a good point where, uh, there is a, is, is there a deed restriction on the third lot?
There is on the third lot, yeah.
On the third lot, not this lot?
Third lot, there's a deed restriction, it can only be a single family house.
You say no?
Why?
Because, uh, it was, it was, uh, there is, yeah.
There is, I've seen it.
So my, my understanding is that, uh, you can only build a single family home on the third lot.
Where's the third?
But he's not proposing anything on the third lot right now.
No, uh, of course, but what I'm getting at is then you're gonna have a, uh.
Is that here?
You're, you're not gonna have the house, let's say hypothetically, it, 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 there is, alright?
Yeah.
You're not gonna have the house on the street, right?
And it's gonna be 15 feet because you gotta follow zoning. That's what the ZBA is for.
Unless they commit, alright, but if the applicant comes in and says, I don't wanna do that, I want it to go back, and he has a good reason, then we can consider that. But can we tell the applicant to do something against our ordinance?
Yes, we are, we are.
That's a question for our attorney.
We are the planning board. You're not doing any planning, all you're doing is doing a rubber stamp because the man has come here and said, oh, I'm following code, okay, you're following code. I agree.
That's normally what we want them to do.
No.
We want them to follow our code.
We are not doing any prior planning, this is sketch.
It was planned by the comprehensive plan.
It's actually not even.
And then codified in our zoning ordinance. And, and for the most part, 95% of what's in our zoning ordinance, if the applicant comes in and he's abiding our zoning ordinance, we shouldn't be getting in the way of, of his, um, development potential, but.
I'm going home.
Well, just, just so everybody knows too.
I mean, you know, you know what my, you know what my thoughts are on it and it's my thoughts on this whole Town Center concept in general.
And Town Center doesn't actually allow single family residential, so if there's a deed restriction on that third lot that says you can only have single family, our Town Code doesn't allow single family in the Town Center.
But they have to get a variance.
They go to the. They, they go to.
So they have to get a use variance or.
And, but that's.
Or change the zone, it's a spot zone, so it's, it's a very odd situation.
We created the hardship and then there's the point where Sparrow's Nest, your interpretation's gonna determine it's a 100 versus 15?
I don't know how we tell someone.
Is that it? So, you know, you're gonna have, you're gonna have that. I mean, uh, would, so aesthetically, aesthetically, from your point of view, how, how would this impact? Well, if we followed our code and, and Sparrow's Nest and you have the library, um.
I think it would look a little bit out of place, but it, the first development always looks out of place.
Exactly.
How many, how many times do we drive along a road and see a sidewalk that goes to nowhere, right?
And Alaska.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so, but. I'm, I'm very interested in your opinion. Uh, what would you want it to look like, your, the road that you're, you're, you, you're developing? This is a clean slate here and.
Yeah, so why don't we, why don't we ask the owner?
Right.
Not, he's not the owner, there's the owner.
Okay.
Ask the owner, not the engineer.
Just, just, just to point, certain grass, you know, trying to, just, just to note, I can think of the idea of Town Center, it's gonna be a parking, I'm making it more like a, like a, like a little.
Yeah.
So there is area, maybe not so much on the property itself, but along this area here for sidewalk. But I think that goes along with a sidewalk and walking like that, building, just, you know, having buildings that are a lot closer, that's what I'm assuming they were thinking. But the point is, is there is an area here for a sidewalk and we're not close to certain of that. In terms of kicking buildings back. In terms of taking the buildings back, um, I, I, you know, as long as we can make, you know, it can work, like, like I said before, I think we have room, but I don't know how I sell that to the zoning board, because they're gonna look, well, can you meet the 15 feet, we have a ten, or why are you coming to us for a variance?
Because I wanna put it back.
Right, well, it'd be great if you could go to the zoning board and just say, "Because I want to."
Yeah, why not?
Because they, they either- There's four criteria that they have to make a judgment on.
They either say yes or no.
No, they consider the four criteria, and if one of the criteria is there's no hardship, if you can't prove a hardship-
It's five.
Would, would this fall under any one of the five?
You have, you have to, you have to justify all five.
Five criteria.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a balancing test, so they have, you have to, the applicant has to prove that the detriment being caused by not following the law doesn't outweigh the benefit that he's gonna gain. So, the zoning board is charged with balancing those five criteria, so like, you know, for instance, the self-created hardship, well, there really isn't such a thing as an area variance where it's not self-created, you know, so it, it carries less weight in the balancing test, because like Mike's saying, sure, I could, I could meet the zoning, but I have a plan in mind and the reasons behind it, so if the planning board said, "We would prefer that because of the streetscape, knowing where the Beakman Library is, knowing that the Sparrow's Nest is, is proposed there right next door, and you only got one other parcel that's on this street, all the rest is owned by the town."
Right.
You know, there's, there's a third parcel on the right, you know, so it's-
So, aesthetically-
It's a short street to deal with, but-
Aesthetically, clearly, it would look better if each of the buildings were set back.
It would look more consistent with the neighborhood.
More consistent with the streetscape, yeah.
Right. And Dollar General, how were they, how were they able to meet the five criteria?
Because they needed parking in the front.
They had a state wetland in the back, and in order for them to go back with their trucks and everything, they actually proved that they would have more buffer disturbance, so we allowed them to keep the, the parking in the front for their, for their truck movements, and it helped them limit their DEC wetland disturbance, but they also showed that 55 goes like this, with, in terms of buildings up front and the back.
Right.
Up front and the back, up front and the back, right.
My opinion is that if, if we were to look at 55 the way, the way it currently is, it's not aesthetically appealing to me. I mean, you like it?
My building?
Oh, yours is beautiful. Yours and yours-
Everybody except for Fay, apparently.
I own Keybank, I own Keybank.
And your sidewalk is, like a star, I just can't go anywhere on it. I wanna, I wanna be able to go somewhere.
But that was pre, that was pre.
But I found myself pacing, you know, it was like a, you know-
Well, the people at the motel seem to get all around the key.
So, you know, there could be a safety consideration where people are, don't have to go to the back of the building, you know, I don't know, but my feeling is that it would be nice if somehow you were able to meet those five criteria and go up for the zoning board of appeals with a setback.
And, and I think, and it just hurt from the, 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 he's willing to move so it back, so if I could get, typically, here's referrals on this board, the zoning board, if I have referrals on this board, sending the project to the ZBA for these particular reasons.
Right.
And I'll try to get it back as far as I can, to make it, you know, still make it work, then I'll, 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 I'll make a shot.
You know, and we, so, we're creating a hardship for you, unfortunately, but I understand his point completely.
Do you think the zoning board meeting, I think, from that time anyway?
Right.
Well, this, this is, this is another one of the issues where it'd be a coordinated review unless, that's, that's the way that this board works, so unfortunately, it's, yeah, there, there's a risk in, in terms of being able to, you know, you have to bring it to a certain point where the environmental determination can be made, and then you go to the ZBA. I don't, I don't think our ZBA gives out, you know-
Conditional.
Opinions of where they might lie.
No, they can't legally, I don't think they can.
Right.
That would be the only way they, they could go there, is just to almost straw pull them, you know, "How do you feel about this? This is what we're looking to do."
Can they do that legally? I don't think we could.
I don't know, can they, can, can they, kinda, gonna feel from the ZBA, or does it have to be a decision that night?
Because it's a public hearing whenever you go before the ZBA.
I have done before that, and not have tried, because they have a type of question.
Right.
But, but I can go to the Trump and ask for, for discussion, because I have done that with a lot of projects, is to give feedback as to whether, you know-
It's possible.
Done before, and just see, I can do it again, without an R B, without a super decision. That way, you can, I can go up to the board, and just pay with it, then I can go as whole last year, but without getting that, a little out of work, and to this, or put the building back, and then not get a variance, and just do the job twice.
I, I think this is a unique situation.
It is.
That where the intent doesn't match what's, what's happened out there, and the, because the buildings are currently set back, and the new, and Sparrow's Nest is gonna be set back, and then there's only one other lot that it's not gonna meet the spirit of the law, so I, I, it feels like the board can get behind moving this back, but you're under no obligation to do that. If you're willing to do that, I think we're willing to be supportive of that.
Do you want to make a plan for that?
Oh, you do not.
What'd you say?
What'd you say?
I didn't get that.
You do not.
He wants to make the planning board happy.
Well, if that makes sense, to try and get-
Thank you for that, though. That was nice.
If you're willing to-
If you're comfortable with that.
That, that sounds like a good plan, but it sounds like more work for you guys, because you've come in in compliance, and now-
And I'm just still, wouldn't lose anything if we just move it back, like, I got a sufficient allowance, we can get it back.
Well, I mean, you could say you have it as of right, however, in keeping with what it is, what is already there and what's planned for there, you feel this would be aesthetically more appropriate to move them back.
I know, that's, that's just not, it's just in our-
Or something, something planning for it.
It wasn't, it hasn't turned into a reform.
Yes. Well, we're recommending that you consider it, right?
Right.
Peters.
So, that's-
Can I ask for, watch video?
It's up to Dan.
Yeah, I'm gonna watch the video.
Hey, guys, are we, are we in a position of giving a letter that he has as of right to do it this way, however, we feel aesthetically it would match the existing and proposed project or not? Is that, is that appropriate?
So, I'm, can I, I'm really curious what the five are, I can't remember, I've been before the zoning board of appeals twice myself in Austin.
Financial?
Financial hardship.
Yeah, detriment to the neighborhood.
Detriment to-
Detriment to the environment. Um, that's four.
Self-created hardship.
That's four.
Self-created.
Self-created, yeah.
Well, we, we self-created it, so we could, that would be that, you know, but as far as the neighborhood is concerned, I mean, aesthetically, that, that, to me-
So, he just wants some type of an endorsement from the planning board?
I'm perfectly willing to endorse it.
Yes, we just want the resolution, offering the applicant an endorsement, should it?
Yeah.
To the zoning board, or-
It is.
A recommendation.
But we've already-
Should we give an unrelated application going on at the same time, the aesthetics?
They're very important, and we're the architectural review board simultaneously, and our comprehensive plan was written a very long time ago, when retail was flourishing.
Right.
And, and if, if we were to try to enforce that for, for a retail business, like, for example, Dollar General, the store would have a security issue, because they'd have two entrances, and it would be very confusing in many ways.
All right, so I, I'd like to make a motion to recommend to the zoning, that the zoning board of appeals offer or approves a variance to allow this applicant to set back the buildings further, and that we, we believe that this is the appropriate thing to do because of the neighborhood charac, because it would more fit within the neighborhood character.
Don't you think, though, Rob, sorry to interrupt, that it would have to be, it'd have to be a plan as to how far back, so we're gonna recommend that they go back so many feet, and they get a variance for that and come to us.
Well, I, I think we still need the flexibility to review it, we just want them to be able to break that, break that-
Without specifics.
Yeah.
It's the same issue with them actually granting the variance, though.
Right, right.
Without an environmental determination.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not asking for any motion or any approval.
You just wanna get an idea.
Right, right, the way Rob said it, I just wanted to say, you said approve, so that would be issuing a permit or-
I make a motion, all right, so maybe I should be making a motion to be in support of-
Of a setback.
Of the applicant going to the zoning board for a discussion, that we're, we, you know, to move the buildings back to, for variance for that.
Because we really don't know, we really don't know about Sparrow's Nest yet, I mean, that factor's in, too, so.
Hey, Rob, I'm second, I'm gonna guess this score from left.
Pete's at home watching.
Are you second?
Are we good?
I'll second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Who's, who's writing this letter? This is, this is, had been a problem previously, who's writing the letter?
The chairman.
The chairman?
You're signing it, let's put it that way.
Okay, that's fine.
It's not a letter, it's just a-
A referral.
It's just a resolution, we're just making a resolution at a meeting.
You want me to write it?
It's in the meeting, it's, oh, Mike, Mike's gonna go, you're gonna go to the zoning board and say that at the meeting they made a resolution-
Right.
-recommending that I do this.
Yes, there you go.
So, we're just doing this resolution that needs to be reported in the minutes.
Yep.
Is that, is that sufficient for you?
Yeah, no, that's fine, there's just two, two quickies, um, you know, a lot, the least, number one, they're up to is because they have set the air in back, and the soil out there is not so hot.
Yeah.
So, I've got soil tests, so I'm gonna have a little bit of design work, because what's holding it, it needs to back, and going further back, and set there is, right? They also assume that parking in the front is not an issue, or is not a, not a, not interesting.
Not interesting.
Yeah, how many bedrooms do you think are, do you have any idea on that yet?
Yeah, I think I, I had something out here, or it was in the documentation.
One to two, isn't it?
I might have missed it, then, I didn't see it.
I mean, in, in light of the fact that we're allowing the Sparrow's Nest to put the parking in the front of their place, the whole fact that we're trying to be consistent with the character, the name, I mean, if we're gonna do this, we're gonna be consistent, right?
And I think, I think the-
So, I don't think that's off the table, to have parking in front.
I don't think so, neither, yeah.
Just give us the flexibility and latitude to review this, but-
But it might be, it might, Rob, tend to look, it might be because of the soils.
Right.
Well, the soils and the parking in the back, is I think, if they're parking in front, then, then I have a lot of flex.
Yeah.
And, and the Sparrow's Nest had some, some really-
The subject's not gonna move.
Well, it is, it's gonna be there, but they have to change the size of the project.
Hopefully you have the same soils as-
In terms of, of setback, they're proposing, and we're trying to-
Yeah, it's just-
And then all the, the landscaping-
They wanted to look good, right, yeah.
Landscaping.
Would mitigate the, the parking area.
Yeah. Electronic, no. Yeah, I know.
So, I, I would like to make a motion of a recommendation for this project to have a discussion with the zoning board of appeals, whereby we would be supportive of a variance, allowing the buildings to move back, and furthermore, the, which would allow for arrangement of design and flexibility in the design, including parking, such that, because we think that the placement of the buildings in accordance with the town center plan would look inconsistent with the natural, with the character of the community.
The character of the neighborhood, because that's one of the, that's one of the problems, is, how does this affect the neighborhood?
Yeah.
And, yeah.
Can I get a second?
Aye. Sir?
All in favor?
Aye.
Peter, you can go.
So now you can explain to the zoning board that we're, we've provided a recommendation for them to consider a variance, we think they should consider a variance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. All right, I have a motion to, a motion, a motion, a motion to close the meeting?
Yeah.
A second?
Peter's not here, so I'll do that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, good night.
Thank you.
There's the Watkins.